Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Dennis School Board on May 18th, 2015. We do have a quorum this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We had a special enclosed meeting on April 13th, a regular meeting on April 13th, special enclosed meeting on May 4th, and a special meeting on May 11th. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Set.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those sets of minutes. Any additions or corrections to the minutes as written? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Dr. Dressen, can you walk us through tonight's agenda, please?
I will do that. Prior to, since the last regular school board meeting in April, we had a couple other work sessions. That was a closed session dealing with personnel matter on April 4th, and a variety of reports. On May 11th, the board did meet for a brief time to certify the referendum results, as well as get an update on and approve field trips as it relates to our May term, both for the French trip as well as the Spanish trip, and then a brief leadership update. And earlier tonight, we did have an extensive meeting, a closed session where we did some negotiation strategies and parameters, where the board gets ready for some work agreement settlements that we're moving forward on, but also went into an extensive reports on our mental health and wellness plan, as well as our guidance and counseling study. And then finally, the board spent some time taking a look at how we're moving forward with our construction efforts as we move forward with that. And that's going to take up a lot of our time going forward. Tonight's meeting, we did approve the minutes. We'll be recognizing our DECA team. They're here in force, and we appreciate them, so we'll be calling them out in a little bit. We do have an opportunity to hear from the audience, as well as, we have two reports, one around our writing materials adoption, which is our teaching and learning committee's been working on, as well as a general leadership update. We've got a variety of consent agenda items that we'll be going over in more depth. Most of them are routine items for the night's meeting. Action items are gearing up for the 2015-16 school year, so as I go through these items, you'll recognize many of them relate to next year, including approving the unrequested leave recommendations for next year, class size guidelines, it's change in kindergarten, property liability insurance, our food service contract, pricing for food service going forward, taking a look at some capital improvements, a variety of venues, our copier machines and copy paper, and then some significant technology purchases going forward. Then the board does have some policies that we're reviewing and moving to address. We may be also having some discussion on those. Finally, we will be discussing and taking a first look at some of our strategic planning as we look over the next couple of years, as well as some parameters as we look at change around the six-eight model, and then grades nine through 12, both program and facility plans. From there, we'll take a quick look again at taking action on our K-5 writing materials, as well as the possibility of having concurrent enrollment with our mathematics class. That would be with a college class, as a high school class, giving students the opportunity to experience both in one setting. Finally, we'll be looking at amendment to our teacher's evaluation, MOU, and calendar changes at the high school for 2015-16. And that will conclude the items that will be taken care of on a busy May board meeting.
Thank you, Rick. We've got a minor modification to the agenda. Regina, you want to make a motion?
I move that we table the approval of the action on policy 622, so that the policy committee can spend time talking about some of the items that we'll discuss at the April meeting.
Can I add a second to that motion?
Second.
So moved, additional discussion. All those in favor of tabling policy 622, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have our DECA recognitions. Dr. Dressen.
So at this time, I'd call on Ryan Gallagher and Alicia Hawker, as well as our DECA team to come forward and be recognized for their great work. Why don't we start over here, and we'll just get you up right in front. Bring your, bring, yes, bring, 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 bring it along, and the, and the clanging medals. Here we go. So Ryan, how many years have you been with the DECA program? And it's just a program that's really been growing and building. Why don't you talk a little bit about your experience a little bit? What is a DECA?
Okay. I've been here since 2004, and it's young business students and entrepreneurs, and it's co-curricular, so we learn about it inside the classroom, and we compete outside the classroom. And as you can see, we had a lot of success this year.
And how many students do you have involved in?
Would you say about 300?
300.
I have 300 kids.
300 kids. They all find a place, and what are some of the areas that they study?
Like I said, we do a lot of marketing, a lot of entrepreneurship, finance, accounting. Is there any other areas you want?
And Alicia, how long have you been with us?
I've been at Edina, this is my third year, and I've worked with Ryan and the DECA program for all three of those years.
And what's brought you into interest in this arena and working with kids?
You know, actually, just working with them outside of the classroom on such an academic piece, where students are so excited to actually work on a paper outside of class is really cool for me as an educator, and just to get to know them and help them find their passion in business.
Well, we're going to go right down the line about a name, grade level. If you are a graduating senior, maybe the plans that you have for next year. And I'll catch the mic at the other end, and then we'll do a few more question and answer.
I'm Megan Dockerty, and I am a junior this year.
I'm Catherine Johnson, I'm a sophomore this year.
I'm Madison Seeley, I'm a junior this year.
I'm Emma Roback, I'm a senior this year, and I'll be going to Grinnell College next year.
I'm Lindsay Reel, and I'm a junior this year.
I'm Becca Barnes, and I'm a junior this year.
I'm Matt Woolsey, and I'm a senior this year, and I'll be going to Northeastern University.
I'm George Thomas, I'm a senior this year, and I'll be attending University of California, San Diego next year.
I'm Jacob Edmondson, and I'm a senior this year, and I'll be attending the University of Minnesota.
I'm Ben Bogart, and I'm a senior this year, and I'm going to Notre Dame next year.
Okay, so we had great success across the board, a great experience out in Atlanta, and...
Orlando.
Orlando. You didn't stop in Atlanta. Okay, you were in Orlando. What the heck? So, what I'd like to talk a little bit about with Esme, Emma, and Madison, as well as Ben, because they had some success that even went beyond some of the national work. And if they could kind of take a step forward, we can talk a little bit about their experience. So, we were with you, let's talk a little bit about what it was like to get down at that national level, and what your expectations were, where you're going to get into that competition. You've done it at the state level, you've done it at the local level, but how different was it at the national level?
I mean, honestly, it was, it was the same structure of it. It was fairly similar. I think, I don't know, going into it, I guess I was really psyched out. It's more of a psychological competition than anything else. I think, well, I, you know, initially, after completing the test, which is one of the components of your, you know, overall score, I thought I did really bad. But, I mean, again, it is a psychological thing, and honestly, it was, it was really surreal, the entire experience, and I'm really blessed to have the opportunity, so.
Fantastic. And talk a little bit about the experience. You have the written test. What else is all involved in this, and how do you find out how you scored and how you performed?
So I do a role play, which is different than Ben and Madison. It's sort of a case study. So you do the written exam, as well as two role plays that go together to make your combined score, and then you move on to finals from there.
And as you move through it, were you thinking this is going well? You're seeing how, do you get to see how others are doing as well?
You don't really see how others are doing, but you kind of hear, oh, I think I did really well on that, or, oh, I don't think I did so well. So, you kind of just can't get, let yourself be psyched out about what other people are doing, so.
And Ben, how do you think this is going to help you as you look to the future? You know, do you have plans to go into business? And then, how important does this work to what you're looking to do going forward?
Yeah, so I'm definitely looking to go into business at Notre Dame next year, and this was cool, just even like writing the paper and kind of figuring out how to structure a business paper like that was really helpful. And then also, I'm not, I'm not really looking to go into marketing, but it was cool to kind of see how that interacts with all the other components of business, like the, we did the budget and stuff, so like the financial aspect of that, that was really cool to see how that all worked together.
Ryan, what's, what's brought the greatest pride around you being part of this and seeing how things roll here?
I want to say something too, on their behalf. There was top three from every state in the United States. There are 160 to 200 kids in every event, so even, even the kids that didn't make finals had great success. Their test scores were great. I mean, the kids, I was telling some of the kids' parents, they were studying on the bus on the way to the competition, so I knew good things were going to happen. So, I'm just very proud of them, and, because trying and caring, that's something, it's hard to teach, and I didn't have to work too hard. They tried and they cared, and those are the biggest things for us, too. So, and I'd also like to say that of all the high schools in the United States, that we won the third most trophies, so that's pretty, pretty good, so.
Not that we're competitive. Well, on behalf of the entire community, we do want to congratulate you. Chair Meyer's got a few other recognitions?
Thank you.
And we need to get a...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Everybody squeeze in.
We got to get a picture to...
We'll go two rows.
Come on, boys.
Congratulations, everybody.
Next up, we've got a couple members of the audience who'd like to speak to us tonight. Paul and Mindy, step on up. You've got three minutes.
Do I need this?
Yes, you do.
Good evening. First of all, congratulations on the referendum results. It's very exciting, and we're thrilled to, the opportunity of how we can be using those funds to move Edina to the top of the ladder with sustainability projects. I want to thank Member Neville for coming to the Paul Douglas event, and we, we had 189 people. It was a best event we've had, talking about community solar and moving Edina again to a future of renewable energy. I'm here tonight to recognize Melissa Williams and the Building and Grounds Department. They have really revitalized the Go Green Committee, and we are now operating at a level that we were a few years ago. So we're really excited to move forward in engaging all of the schools with the piece that's on the agenda for the Go Green, and Mindy will talk more about that right now.
Thank you. And Mindy Aller, and Paul and I, as Cool Planet, have been working with the Student Environmental Leadership Council, which is made up of about 12 students from Southview, Valleyview, and the high school, that have been very excited to work on efforts to make their schools more sustainable. And many of them, there's at least one representative from that group that comes to each of our district-wide Go Green Committee meetings. Unfortunately, they're all studying for tests tonight, so couldn't come to speak in person. But we're very happy that the Go Green team has presented the policy 805 to standardize the organics and recycling in all of the schools, and also to create a position on all of the PTOs for a Go Green environmental coordinator. And the students at Southview have been given us the example of the ninth graders going to the sixth grade classes to teach them about the organics and the recycling in their school, and they say what a difference it makes when the students are really familiar this, with this from their elementary schools. So making it standard across schools will make it much easier for them as they progress through the school system to be consistent at all levels.
And as a member of the Energy and Environment Commission, we have asked the city council to designate one member of the council to work closely with environmental issues, and that person is Kevin Staunton, and we would like to ask the school board to consider the same thing of one of the members being a champion to work with our student leaders and with the PTO coordinators that'll be adopted next year. So, thank you for the opportunity to say hi, and great job, another great year, and we have unbelievable potential in this school. I just am so blown away with Edina. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your efforts.
Thanks, Mindy. Next up, we have our writing materials adoption report.
Want to welcome Randy Meyer and Caroline Lyndon and Kelsey Wolf, joining us to talk a little bit about our K-12 writing and next generation competencies. Take it away, trio.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Mr. Meyer, Superintendent Dressen, school board members, and our community. I am joined here this evening by Caroline Lyndon, our K-12 Literacy and Language Arts Coordinator, and Kelsey Wolf, a grade three teacher at Normandale Elementary School. I am Randy Smosel, Director of Teaching and Learning, and we're here to talk to...
Not Randy Meyer.
Pardon me?
Not Randy Meyer.
Yeah, that's, no, I was cracked in. And we are here to talk to you this evening about our writing adoption for K-5. And I'll start by saying that clear writing shows clear thinking, and critical, critical thinking is an essential skill set that transfers to all content areas in school and to all aspects in life outside of school. The adoption that we're here to discuss tonight is for K-5 language arts. We have divided reading and writing into two areas, and we'll be working on reading next year. So this is all about writing materials for this year, or purchasing materials that will be for next year, actually. We did the work this year. We follow a seven-year review cycle for curriculum adoptions. However, it's been quite a few years since our last adoption in this area, I think about 10 years, since we've had new materials in this area. What Caroline and Kelsey will speak about tonight will be a little bit about the process we went through to purchase, to recommend these materials to our board, the strengths and weaknesses of some of the materials, the costs, how we determine the alignment of those materials, and just give you example of the kind of assessment and other types of support that these materials will provide for our teachers. So with that, I will turn it over to Caroline to take you through some of the details of the process.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Board. I'm happy to be here. So, one, part of the process was pulling a committee together. We've had teachers from all buildings. We had two representatives from each building and from each grade level. We also had a special education teacher give us some input, and English language teacher, a media, and a media specialist. So, we pulled the committee together, and we developed, we studied best practice. We developed some criteria as far as what we were going to be looking for when we began looking at materials. And you do have a copy of that as Appendix A on the board resolution for discussion, if you'd like to see those. So, Isabel Pancharanai, who was a elementary curriculum coordinator, and I looked at about seven sets of sample materials, and we were able to eliminate five of them right out of the gate. They did not meet the committee's criteria. So we did bring in two vendors this last month, and the committee unanimously decided to recommend purchasing Being a Writer, which is published by the Center for the Collaborative Classroom. These materials also were just recently adopted by Minnetonka, West St. Paul, and Hastings, and outside of Minnesota, St. Louis, Missouri, Las Vegas, and Elgin, Illinois. So, some of the strengths, I won't take the time to read these to you, but the committee went through a really long process after we had seen the vendors. The committee got together and brainstormed strengths and weaknesses for each of the sets of materials, and we boiled those down, and these were the final sort of thoughts from the entire committee. And one of the main features of this set of materials is the fact that the whole approach is really culturally responsive, and that many of the mentor texts, texts are culturally diverse. And I just brought a few to show, if you want to see those. And I'm going to let Kelsey speak a little bit here as far as the process and any, she was able to try out some of the materials in her classroom with her students as well.
Thank you for having us tonight. I was really excited to be a part of this committee, because I've worked in Edina now for nine years, and I also have had the opportunity to, to get an additional certificate in, in writing instruction from the University of Minnesota, and that was funded actually by the Edina Education Fund. And so it was just really exciting for me, and it has been very exciting for me to be a part of this process. I felt, the process was, felt very good and organic to me. We started by looking at the Common Core standards, getting a sense of what our students are expected to be able to do each, at each grade, grade level. And then after we had done that, we were able to look at the materials with that lens in mind. And I've, I'm very excited about these materials, and I can, I can speak, you know, I can speak on behalf of the committee. I feel comfortable doing that. We unanimously endorse these materials. I had an opportunity to use them in my classroom to, as part of our personal narrative unit, and then also our expository nonfiction unit. And I found that the materials were easy to understand and to use. They, they, they helped them, they helped to get students to see themselves as writers. One of the things that we really liked about the materials as a committee is that there are student exemplar, exemplars that are included in the, in the teacher materials. And so, you can look at those, these student examples, and see how they were assessed, and use those as a guide for, for your own assessment of materials. So, it really gave us a sense of what, what is developmentally appropriate, and what we can reasonably expect from students at each of the grade levels. I think that's about it.
Thank you. Great. So, the committee, as Kelsey said, went through a process, and part of that was evaluating the current materials. So are the current materials that we have meeting our needs? And the committee determined that they were not. They are copyright 2005. As Randy referenced, it's been a while since teachers have had new materials for writing. So you can see the costs there. Each teacher will get their own set of 19 to 30 Real Trade books, and these are really important, because these are mentor texts. And so students are going to be read the books that are in the genre that they're going to be writing, so they're going to be immersed in that genre. They're going to have mentor authors to emulate, and we felt that that was a very important piece of this set of materials. There's also lots of professional development that are embedded in the materials. There's QR codes in the teacher manual that teachers can scan with their phone and see a teacher teaching that very lesson in an authentic place. So this set of materials is going to help our students align and become competent in our educational competencies. There's a dual approach to this set of materials that really is unique. There's a social-emotional component as well, and so oral language is built in. Students are asked to self-assess on how they are doing as far as their communication skills. Have they been a good partner? Have they been an ethical partner? And so this is really a unique piece that's going to help get us, get our students to be competent So one of the questions always is, as a K-12 coordinator, how is this going to support the work of our secondary students? It sets the foundation in K-5, because it's based on standards, and students are going to be writing within the same three required genres that are required by the Common Core. The writing process is outlined in the standards, and this process is followed and begun. Students experience this process beginning in elementary, and they'll follow that all the way through grade 12. Grammar and conventions are woven throughout, so it's not a separate standalone teaching that grammar, teaching those conventions of writing. It's embedded in an authentic way. Also, as Kelsey referenced, there's a really robust assessment system with this set of materials. There's student exemplars, there's rubrics, teacher rubrics, student rubrics, and formative and summative as well. In addition, there is an on-demand writing that is going to help our students be more successful in the ACT in grade 11. On-demand writing is really a different type of writing, and it's really its own genre. And so, within the three text types that students are going to be writing, there's an on-demand writing unit to follow each and every one of those. So how does this support all for all? Random pairing is a suggested way to help everybody be part of the writing community. So sometimes you might pair students together for a period of time, but really, we want all of our students to be interacting with all of the students in the classroom, so that we're really seeing each other in our best ways. Our most striving learners can do the same kinds of thinking as our highest achieving students, and having kids see each other as peers in, as part of that community is really important. There is a very robust support for teachers as far as supporting our English language learners in this set of materials, and again, the dual approach with that social-emotional piece was very important. Another element that we felt was important in this curriculum was that it's really going to help teachers learn and grow as far as teachers of writing. We know that handing teachers a book isn't enough. There's going to be professional development. But with, as mentioned before, within the set of materials, there are embedded videos, there's an online course, there's support for teachers as far as the teaching of writing. And so by investing in our teachers, we can directly impact student growth in writing and the educational competencies. And this is one set of materials that does that. And as we're wrapping up, one example of a rubric that teachers and students might see is here. There are whole-class assessments, individual assessment, assessments, social skills assessments, both formative and summative. And these assessments are going to help each teacher know where their students are in relation to responsibility, respect, fairness, caring, helpfulness, and also the writing content that they will be learning. So thank you for your time, and wondering if you have any questions?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
What do you mean by social skills?
Social skills as far as being a good part of the group. So, if we're partnered together, having a discussion, so did I, for example, was I an active listener? Were you responding to me, adding on to what I'm saying, not just you share, then I share, and it's really not related to one another at all? So, did my, did I ask Kelsey if I didn't understand something? Could you tell me more about that? So doing those, how do we really have a rich, authentic discussion with each other? So those are the kinds of things that are built right in. So there's teacher modeling of that, but there's also prompts from teachers that teach kids to do that if they're not doing that. But then students also self-assess on those skills.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Other questions?
I just have a comment. I appreciate the work that all of you have done with this. And Caroline, I want to welcome you to the team. This is your first opportunity to present to all of us, and this is a great review of the writing program. Look forward to hearing more about it as we implement it.
Thank you. We're excited.
So can you explain how this particular writing program that you're choosing is addressing kids who are in the special ed realm?
Sure.
How does it address their needs?
So we had a special education teacher sit on, sit in on the committee. She was also part of all of our discussions, and she felt as though this will help us, will help special ed, special needs students as well. So the way that special education teachers are going to access those materials are likely going to be online. Since they need to access K-5 materials, all of the manuals are available online, all of the assessments, all of the student exemplars, all of those things are available online on demand for all of our special education teachers.
Okay, so then I'm going to go to the other side. So how is this for the children who are at the other end of the spectrum in the GT? Because I don't see that GT was represented on this panel. So there wasn't the GT coordinator wasn't on, on the committee?
No, but, but we have spoken about it. So, she and I have spoken about that. So the other piece of this that's, that's very unique is that kids have a lot of choice and voice. And so students who are writing perhaps above grade level are going to have a chance to show that. And with those rubrics, again, we don't stop at just proficient. We do have students aim for that above-level proficiency, and so students can write to their very highest ability, and they have that choice and voice which allows all students to reach their potential.
Choice and voice in the, choice of the book?
Choice in the, for example, the topic. So we might all be writing a personal narrative, but you're going to get to choose what personal narrative or what event you may be writing about. For example, in the persuasive unit, you're going to be able to choose as a student what's an issue that might be very important for you to persuade someone else about. And so, that choice that's built in really is part of that culturally responsive piece, along with just naturally differentiating the writing that kids are going to be doing.
As a communications major in college, when I look at this, one of the things that make, that I want to make sure that we're focusing on, obviously, is teaching our kids to be good communicators. So, as we look at adopting this program, what do you think are the key improvements in doing that over previous programs to, to begin to lay that foundation for our kids to be able to communicate well?
So there are some recommendations about the amount of time that we teach writing that might be new for some teachers. Students are going to get a chance to write each and every day in an authentic way. Previously, the writing was sort of woven in with the reading materials, and so this is really a standalone, not a standalone, because it's integrated, but it's really focusing on how do we teach kids to write, and then having them apply that knowledge, which is different than, than before. So we do writing all throughout the day, but this is a dedicated time each day when we're really specifically teaching students how to write. And again, those grammar pieces, the social-emotional pieces, all of those pieces are, are woven in throughout. So it's, it's a standalone, but it's also integrated.
Okay. You just mentioned grammar, so I am kind of wondering... You just mentioned grammar, so I am kind of wondering a little bit about how much of that is in there and, you know, the writing is, teaching them to write is excellent, but also punctuation, proper use of grammar, is that woven in as well?
It is.
Okay.
So it's twofold. There are lessons that are integrated in every writing unit that focus on grammar and conventions. And then when it comes time to assess your students, we do assess students on their conventions. Are you, in third grade, are they using punctuation and capital letters? And also, do they have sentence, you know, their use of fragments or run-on sentences? So definitely students are being taught it and then assessed on it at the very end of each unit.
Wonderful.
And that's part of that writing process that is inherently built and referenced in the standards. So it's not a one and done, that's why that on-demand writing is different. That's kind of a one and done. But writing is a process and grammar and conventions are all interwoven as part of that process.
Wonderful.
And assessed.
Quick question. It looks like there's a lot of really good things here in this program. The random pairing, is that something that we're going to move towards all random pairing or how is that going to be put in place?
So I'm waiting to hear more, a little bit about that too. So there are times when we're going to be strategically pairing students in writing. However, one of the goals is, as I understand, is again, building that community. And so if there isn't a really sort of purposeful reason to be pairing students intentionally, then they recommend the random pairing of students to help build that writing community as far as when they're sharing. So when we're reading Bear Dream, when our teacher is reading this, there's going to be some facilitated turning and talking times during this book. And so it's whoever I might be sitting with that I might have a conversation with. Next time it might be the person on this side. And so having kids build that community and learn to talk to lots of different kinds of people in different ways and self-assessing how that's going is sort of the background of that random pairing.
Can I ask, so are the books leveled in terms of reading level?
These are not because they're read aloud by the teacher. So students aren't going to be reading these particular books. They can go on the chalk rail or whatever for students to read a second or third or fifth or tenth time, but they're developmentally appropriate, but they're not necessarily a certain reading level because the teacher will be doing the reading. Which level's the playing field for all readers? They can, all students can do the thinking if they hear a text aloud.
Very well done. Two questions. One, do we need to budget some additional dollars for training and implementation?
No.
And two, is there a trickle-up effect in the middle, in the secondaries?
In terms of budgeting, this is within our allocated budget. So we have a capital budget every year for textbooks, for materials. This is within our capital purchase and those are planned out so that we stay within that budget. And this is also part of our staff development, our professional development budget. So these are, these are both items that are factored into our budget when we construct those. And I'm sorry, what was the second?
Secondary. So does this change how we think about writing at the secondary level, you know?
About adopting new materials in secondary?
So will this generate, yes, will this generate a need for additional materials in the secondary or newer materials?
Not necessarily. I don't think they're up for review anytime soon, but the fact that this is standards-based and our secondary teachers are also teaching from standards, they naturally align. And so if there's any tweaks or additions that we need to make at secondary, they're all going to be standards-based and therefore they'll naturally align.
Excellent. Additional questions?
Just one of the things that this committee started off with was really taking a look at the standards at the beginning of the year and identifying which of these are the highest priority or the power standards, if you will, and then unpacking those and really understanding those. And that's what created that base of shared understanding and knowledge that then allowed the group to move to the next level, finding materials and resources that really support those standards at all of the developmental levels and all of the grade levels. So I'd just like to really publicly thank Kelsey and the other teachers on the team and all of the work that they did for vetting these materials and all the work around the standards and also Caroline for her work in facilitating this throughout the year. Tremendous amount of work by our staff and very excited about the outcome of what they're proposing here.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Remind the board that later tonight we'll be taking our first look at the formal document, formal plan as it were for board approval.
Next up is our leadership update.
No, it's discussion.
Again, do that monthly check-in with the board and the community and some of the work we're focusing on, including our strategic work. We definitely, with the May 5th vote being a positive one for the school district, that does give us some strong direction that really allows us to move forward with several of our key strategic initiatives because that space is a big part of the work we are doing around time, talent, funding, and space. When we talk about this, I want us to recognize over the next two years, it's going to be a lot about alignment. So the 2015, 16, 2016, 17 year is really getting us to a launch point. And so if we think of that as a launching pad, our work around standards and assessment and all the studies that we're having, being completed over the next two years is really getting us to that solid landing spot. So in fall of 2017, we really will be ready to take off to that next level. This will be the scheduled time for the opening of the 912 high school, the 68 middle school. Our K through five programming will be in their second year of their initiative work and then our preschool programming, our early childhood programming will also be moving forward. So we really have two years of heavy planning, of piloting different projects, of refining some of the things that we're initiating so that in the fall of 2017, we have some great things going to chase that vision that we proposed back in 2012, the board approved. And I really commend all of our leaders for their work, our staff for their work. It's an exciting time. We have community members now providing input around our birth through grade five study and as well as staff. So we continue to do this refinement, but the next two years are really going to be critical. Some of the key actions at a district level are highlighted here. They talk a little bit about some of the key things. For example, first semester during the 2015, 16 school year, continuing to assess our workforce analysis to make sure we have a workforce that will meet the needs as we look to the future, looking at approving the 2016, 17, and 2017, 18 calendar. The board over the summer months will be refining those parameters, give us some direction on that. Obviously, we'll be doing a lot of design work with our facilities as well as in the second semester approving construction bids. And there really be spring of 2016 when we'll be getting into a breaking ground on a variety of our projects. When we look at our secondary schools, looking for that first semester work, you can see we'll be focusing on daily schedules and starting to define what the 68 middle school daily schedule and 912 daily schedule will be. We'll also be doing some more discussions as we move from a 69, 10, 12 model to a 68, 912 model in some of our program areas. That second semester will refine from a staffing standpoint where teachers and other support staff will be headed. Not that we'll be making that move in the fall of 2016, but we really want a year to build family as it relates to how we'll have that done. Again, we'll be going through the policy process. We've already talked to staff about what they're looking for, expectations around that. Course requirements will also be determined and we'll also be taking a look at how we'll be managing our transportation plan on the west campus. We're doing a study of Valley View along with the city. At our birth through grade five, again, they'll be doing some similar work around taking a look at design work and piloting several projects. The board will be hearing more about pilot projects in June and they too, the second semester will be looking at daily schedules. When we look at some of our strategic work going forward, we did hear a lot at the last board meeting as well as the work session about our guidance and counseling and our mental health and wellness initiative. Our all-for-all work is really closing the academic opportunity as well as achievement gaps and looking at how we can continue to do that. The board will be hearing more about that in upcoming board meetings. I talked a little bit about our programming side of it. We've got a variety of partnerships continuing to move forward. A lot of exciting things happening with our professional development and again, in June and July, the board will be hearing from Randy and his team around our professional development, a three-year plan to make sure our staff is ready for how we are continuing to evolve in this next generation of public schools. When we look at construction, I want to just step back and again, thank the community for their involvement and thank the staff for their work and sharing information so that we had an informed vote on May 5th. As we looked at those results, the board did approve last week the totals and it is official now at 3,785 yes votes, 2,869 no votes, a total of 6,656 votes. We're the end of our election results. As we look to the future, we know this is a construction plan that is rolling out and beginning now with some discussions around design. We know we'll get heavy into construction through 2017 of the fall and probably continue through that calendar year of 2017 with construction. I would continue to encourage the staff as well as the community and board, the review and comment plan that was approved by the Department of Education really is our guidebook. So when we look at dollar allocations, we look at the scope of our projects, that is our guideline and we'll continue to use that as a guide going forward of as far as allocation of funding or scope of projects at the various 10 sites. That will continue to guide a lot of our work and we'll bring that back along the way. But this does talk about the various phases that we have going forward from the very earliest schematic design right down to closing out and doing the commission work at the final step of those various 10 projects. I'm going to ask Susan Bratt to kind of step in and talk a little bit about reflections from a communication standpoint about the project or the referendum and the vote and other information, Susan, that might be pertinent for the community and board to hear about.
Thank you, Dr. Dresden, members of the board. So as you know, we, that, those numbers turned out to be about a 57 to 43 percent margin of support, which in our voter turnout, as was approved last week at the canvassing, was about 25 percent. When we look historically at previous referendum, both in 2011 and in 2007, they were held in November and there was over about 29 percent voter turnout. So in line with that kind of voter turnout, it was sort of aligned with, with some preliminary polling that we had done last December as well. We certainly do appreciate the community's support and we look forward to continuing the communication with them. As far as communication going forward, at this point, we do plan on doing some survey work of the community to really assess where voters were at with that. Also looking ahead to how can we continue to gather the input throughout each of those design phases, as Dr. Dresden has pointed out. There will be input opportunities and core planning teams at each of the 10 sites that we'll be touching and we look forward to rolling that out throughout the summer and fall, throughout the spring and summer and into the fall as far as communication and just building on the communications that we already had. So we started last summer and fall with all the communications and really trying to be as transparent as possible with the facilities advisory task force and all of that information will stay online. On top of that, we built all the referendum communications and now we will just build on top of that. So all of that information will be archived and people can reference back to different documents as we move forward because it's a big project, but we're excited to keep it moving, so.
Specific questions as it relates to the strategic work or the construction before I continue to move on, but questions you might have for Susan or anybody else on the lead team at this point?
I just have a question. I don't know if it's for Susan or for you, Rick, but when talking to voters leading up to the referendum, a concern I kept hearing over and over again was the city is doing things that impacts the district and that is what it is, but a concern that the school district is not being proactive in letting the city know how their actions are impacting or potentially could impact the district. And there was frustration over that and I thought this might be a good opportunity for someone to address the extent to which the district does communicate with the city and tries to be out there and anticipating what the consequences of city actions could be for the district.
Well, I'll start and maybe Margot and Susan step in as well. I mean, obviously, we have a close working relationship. There is an expectation that we have this open line of communication. I think we're probably one of the few school districts and cities that have joint goals around how we work together and stay connected. Even have some programming. We have shared facilities. We work very closely on how we maximize that resource. From a city, staffing standpoint, administratively, we meet on a regular basis, both Scott Neal, the city manager, and I meet, but also just across the board, our staff meets on a regular basis. So we're in tune as how things are going forward. So when questions come up around where projects are headed, both at a district level or a city level, we try to have that level of discussion. You know, each body has their own way of how they're going to make decisions as well as raise resources necessary to pay for expenditures and those stand separate, you know, and so we can counsel both ways on this, but in the end of the day, the city has their governance approach and the decision-making they'll make and we have ours. I do think we try to stay quite open in the dialogue around that work, you know, and there's oftentimes that, you know, just from a procedural standpoint, they'll inform us of an action that might be occurring and asking us to weigh in on it. It doesn't necessarily the decision-making process, but we do try to keep an open dialogue going around that. We've had some things even this past 12 months where we've taken a look at everything from sidewalks to other variances where we've had dialogue or we've tried to problem solve at a staffing level around that. So I think we try to be as proactive as we can, recognizing that each government agency has kind of their own function and how they do their work. But I know Susan or Margot want to add to that or other board members?
I certainly would echo the partnership piece, specifically on the transportation side even if there's any work in the city, they're always working with David White, our director of transportation, to make sure our buses get through and accommodating and keeping us informed. I guess probably the best example I can give was I was at a meeting at the city a couple days after the election and was, said, hey, let us know, we're ready, our team is ready. Let us know the calendar. We want to make sure that things are done in time and we're moving along with your projects in the next two years.
And I guess I would just add, from my standpoint with communication and partnership, obviously with any partnership, they're two independent organizations and we try to make sure that we work what's in the best interest of the community, but obviously we have our certain priorities and we understand that. I, like others on the team, you know, I meet regularly with the communications director there and we talk, so I'm just trying to keep each other informed. Anything from, you know, when, you know, they let me know when there's a house fire and so is there a way that then we can support, is that one of our school families and we can do that? So, you know, even little things like that that keep those lines of communication open do help us. We let them know when we're moving forward with things or we have building projects or things that might be impacting them. But I do think that we do have a great relationship and yet we always have to keep in mind that, you know, we have a certain focus area and they have a focus area and sometimes those might not always be perfectly aligned, but I think we try to find the partnership where we can because it's in the best interest of the community.
Additional questions or comments?
Just want to, I'll just move along. We do have an action later tonight around the 2015, 16 calendar for the high school and the board has a little more spell out in detail on the recommendation. It does take a look at some of the uniqueness, given the demand for some of the assessment and the need for staff supervision around some of the testing that we do and yet we've got dates set aside and still the legislature could change things prior to this all happening because we're seeing some possible changes in how assessment might roll forward, but there are some specific trade-out dates that we have established. It's pretty well-defined. Assistant principal Mike Protasky is here tonight to answer any specific questions. I'm Bruce Lockler, but it's around testing days, the semester finals, which we've long supported, allowing a little more flexible calendar for our high school students around that. And then making sure that while we make these modifications, we still have our meeting state requirements. So that would be just on the calendar side. Finally, leadership news. We did kick off the first phase of the May term, the high school, a May term for all. It's a big project and it's been a community effort and we thank everybody involved, the high school staff. Melanie Pusiteri's been kind of a point person around that, but it's been a team effort as well as in the community. We're continuing to monitor the legislature very closely and so we really are, you know, holding on, finalizing our budget planning and staffing plans for 2015, 16 until the legislature does its work along with the governor and signs off on this legislative session. So we'll continue to monitor that, but we'll have a proposed budget to bring to the board in June. We have a variety of staffing positions posted moving forward on that. We're in the closing moments of our director of continuous improvement, the research and evaluation position. We expect to make an announcement as soon as tomorrow. On that position, we also have a principalship at Concord. We have three finalists and moving forward on that and would hope by the end of the week, if not the first of next week, to make a decision and an announcement on that as well. And... And it's hard to believe that May 29th is upon us and it will, this is actually, today was the last Monday of the school year and we will soon be having our students exit and then they'll get all of us, very busy, staff included, as we look for summer time to do some work, but also recharge our batteries as we get ready for another school year. With that, that kind of gives a good overview for board members and the community and some of the happenings, but answer any questions you might have related to this or anything else on leadership.
So I don't know if this is the time or later, but we received correspondence about questions about the May term. So is someone responding to that communication? Is there anything that you have that you can state at this time?
So we will include that in our information piece. So all that correspondence, I think the last correspondence was directed to me, so I'll work with Principal Lockler on developing a response and then making a connection, just as we've done. I mean, typically on some of these, we'd probably do a more, rather than just a written response, we'll try to find a connection response point with them so we can learn from them as well as help them understand some of the dynamics of this. You know, it's always a challenge when you were trying to do what we did and if you board members remember, about a year ago this time, we actually made a decision that we would allow this to pilot at the full level rather than the partial level. And so it's a great time for learning and a great time to get input along the way.
So I guess my follow-up question to that is, I would like feedback on those specific things that were raised in that letter. And so how does that get back to the board so that we fully understand what the situation is? So that's...
Yep, so we'll make sure we follow up on that because the board has carbon copied on it. So just like, that's kind of our protocols, we'll follow that protocol going forward. And there will also be a full report just around our pilot projects, this whole May term project will have a full report once it's all concluded and we have all the data around that. So all that will be included in the effort. Excellent. Additional questions, comments? I should also mention, at the May 11th board meeting, we did approve two field trips related to the May term. We did get all the background information that was requested because again, we had some details that we really wanted some follow-up administrative. We did get the follow-up around certificate of insurance as well as some of the follow-up questions that we had around both of the companies involved. So we're good to go on that and appreciate Randy Smazel and the teachers and Steve Butner is one of our administrators headed on the trip to Costa Rica and Penny Codrich, retired administrators, administrator overseeing the Quebec trip. So should hear good results from them as well. Thank you, Rick. We're on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved. Seconded.
So moved and seconded to bring our consent agenda up. Rick, could you please walk us through? I will. It's the routine personnel items. We have a variety of different leave requests, resignations, new hires. We have our expenditures payable for May 13th. We have an additional appointment to legal counsel as it relates to the possible land purchase going forward. And so we're looking at a counsel that specializes in this area for us. Hennepin County Recycling Grant, we heard a little bit about that earlier tonight, but it's a great grant that's helping us with our Go Green efforts. We have a student teaching agreement with North Dakota State University, some commendations from our DECA team that we heard, saw earlier tonight and then as well as a gift from the Concord PTO. And that would conclude the consent agenda items for tonight. Thank you, Dr. Dresden. Anybody like anything in the consent agenda removed or any general questions? Seeing then, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next up, we have our first action item, unrequested leave recommendations. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Gwen, do you want to provide us a little bit of background, please?
Shirley, at this particular time, we have two teachers that we are recommending be placed on unrequested leave of absence due to the fact that we do not have any teaching positions for them. So one of the teachers has been a half-time kindergarten teacher and we do not have any half-time kindergarten positions at this time. And the other person is a Spanish teacher and unfortunately, we've had to reduce some of our world languages, including Spanish, so we do not have enough, we do not have a full-time position for this person as well.
I would entertain any questions. Any questions regarding unrequested leaves? Seeing then, comments, all those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next up, we have our instructional size guidelines for 15-16. Can I get a motion?
Did we...
Did you need a roll call?
A roll call.
Oh, my bad.
Unrequested.
Undo that, we'll go backwards.
It didn't count.
Proceed, Sarah.
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Pat Slov?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, our instructional class size guidelines. Can I motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Mary?
We had this for a discussion at our last meeting. The only change that is recommended is kindergarten going from 20 to 22. There was an error in the last meeting on what the middle and high school numbers were, but that was a clerical error. We've been staffing the high school and middle school at the numbers that's reflected in this document for the last three years.
Thanks, Mary. Any questions?
Can you just, turn your thing on. I have it on. Sorry. Mary, it sounds like, can you just explain what this means practically for families who are coming in and hearing about this? What does it mean? How will they experience it in the actual classroom?
And we're talking specifically about kindergarten? So this past school year, the 14-15 school year is the first year we've ever had all-day kindergarten for everybody. We, in the past, we had all-day, all of our all-day kindergartens were staffed at 24 students in a section. So to be conservative, we put the guideline at 18, I'm sorry, 20 for residents not knowing what our numbers were going to be. So after one year, we're really not at the 24, we're closer to around the 22. So as far as what would it mean for a family, if a family has had a child come through our system before and been an all-day, they would either notice a smaller class or they would notice that their child would be in the same class size for an all-day kindergarten. The goal would be resident is at no more than 22 with the wiggle room of we could go to an upper, here we go, yeah, resident is at, non-resident would be at 22. So the upper limit for residents is really, you know, around that, between that 20 to 24. Non-resident upper limit is 22. So when we hit 22 in a particular kindergarten class, we would not add any additional students through open enrollment. Does that feel clear? Is that making sense?
I think so. I'm just trying, so I'm just, what is it, if a parent, how would a parent notice the difference? Would they notice this class size is not changing?
I don't, so if a child had a kindergartner this year into next year, again, it would depend on the building. We have some kindergarten classes now that are as small as 18 or 19. We have some that are as high as 24, 25, depending on where the school is, what the resident is. So I'm not sure that a family would, a parent would recognize this limit, this adjustment yet for next year. I think, again, we've had one year of data and so I see this as something that we're going to continue to have to monitor until we have a longer trend, but the principals, the elementary principals were very supportive of increasing it to the 22 from 20.
Does it apply to all elementaries?
Yes and no. So one of the things that I think, so where the no would be is Normandale Elementary has five sections of kindergarten, five sections of kindergarten. They go then into, those five sections go into four for first grade. So they accept 108 students and so in kindergarten, it would be just short of the 22, but in first grade then, it would be a first grade class size of 27. The rest of the other five schools, this is what the numbers would be at.
And as I recall, when we discussed this in HR committee, some of the concerns, of course, was if we raise the upper limit, then are we protected in first grade when we have some families, sometimes we get some kids who come from maybe, you know, one of the private, or excuse me, preschools that offer kindergarten. But the concept is that this is for one year, correct, Mary? And that this, these parameters can be changed from year to year depending on what the research shows, as you said, being in our first year of all-day K. Is that correct?
So we come to the board with class size recommendations every year. Every year, approximately in late April, May, we come with class size recommendations that would be both for discussion at the first meeting and then action at the next meeting. So I will have and we will have as a system a better idea again of how our kindergarten numbers are looking by, you know, next fall early.
Okay.
Can you clarify what the footnote means, Mary? So that number can be lowered but not raised? What is modification intended to mean? Maybe we need to create some clarity around that as well.
It looks like it applies to the non-resident. So we have not necessarily practiced where a reason why we would raise a non-resident upper limit at a particular building in the past. I, I'm, as I'm looking at it, one, you know, there's probably a provision in the event there would need to be, but we've been pretty consistent at keeping the non-resident upper limit at what those guidelines are in the, in what will be the adopted recommendation.
Okay, just, yeah, maybe we want to add some clarity around that or remove that because it's confusing. If it's meant a lower upper limit can be established or if it does mean it can go both up and down, I'm just, if someone read that, it wouldn't be clear to them what we're intending there.
And lastly, Mary, do we have any policies around any of our specialty programs in terms of attendance of kindergarten at that building? Particularly, I'm thinking CP or French immersion to help stabilize the numbers?
So again, Normandale, we accept 108 students for five sections that then convert into four sections of first grade. And so the questions concerning CP, could you clarify?
Well, I guess I'm saying typically you wouldn't enter Normandale Elementary French immersion in first grade because you went somewhere else for kindergarten. And is that true, say, for our CP programs where we would ask that the student stay with the building for kindergarten?
So we're very clear that our expectation is if you want to be part of the continuous progress program, you need to enter that program in kindergarten, both for continuous progress and for French immersion.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Thanks, Mary. Additional discussion? All those in favor of approving the instructional size guidelines for 15-16 as presented, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next up, we have our property liability insurance. Can I get a motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to award the property liability insurance contract for 15-16 to Mist. Little background, please, Margot?
Last December, we approved moving to the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust or Mist for short for a three-year period, which for us would be a two-and-a-half-year period because we were on a January 1 renewal. And at that time, I said I'd come back on July 1 with the renewal information, which I again will do next year. But so it's for a three-year commitment, but I'm happy to report, we were hopeful when we approved this in December, that by the time we came around to the July renewal, that we would have an additional decrease in our deductible, which we do. And although premium is increasing slightly, the deductible is decreasing and all in all relatively even compared to what was approved six months ago. So I would answer any questions you have. We did discuss or have this information in Finance Committee under the information area and would ask for your approval.
So the decrease in deductible only impacts us if we actually have a claim. Do we typically have claims where we use up our deductible?
The first few years I was here, yes. Every year, but I'm happy to say in the last couple of years, we have had claims, we have not used up the deductible, but the first three years, we used it 100%. So...
So if I interpret this correctly, if we don't have any claims, we actually end up with a slightly higher cost.
What is different about this pool, which is what we analyzed when we actually reviewed the bids and quotes in November and December, is it's more of a, there's a self-insured component to it where we also contribute the dollars. It's a little over $100,000. So for those smaller claims, that pool, all the districts are contributing to that. And if there's money left over at the end of the year after all claims or small claims are reimbursed, we will receive some dollars back. We haven't been in it long enough to tap into that yet, but hopeful.
And Margot, going forward, the loss fund, the size of that is determined how?
Historically, they take a look at previous year's claims. They look at the overall group is my understanding. I had my first large group meeting a couple of weeks ago, so, and then they also look at the individual district claims and the history. So as we have our, like I said, three, four, and five years ago, we had some higher claims. As those fall off, our experience, that should lower our, the amount we have to put in the pool.
And our deductible was also higher back then, correct?
It was 50,000 back then.
Yeah, 50, okay.
And that's, that deductible is per occurrence. So we were fortunate in those years that we, I mean, we had some large claims, but there was only one in each of those years. Had we had some combined or multiple events, that deductible would be per event. Would have been.
And our deductible is down to 5,000.
5,000.
Right. Additional questions?
So is this in line with where you thought it was going to be when we got into this program?
Yes.
Additional discussion? All those in favor of approving the property liability insurance as presented, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next up, we have our food service management contract for 15-16. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the food service contract through Chartwell, amount of 278 per equivalent meal for lunch and à la carte and 134.8 per meal equivalent for breakfast. A little background, please?
Last year, we went through the required bid process and with that, we have the option to renew for two more years beyond, or two years beyond that. This would be the first renewal. The state and federal requirements limit or cap the inflationary increase or the amount that we are able to adjust that contract. And this reflects that requirement, 3.7% for this year. It does not change the contract in any other way. That was already approved in... That was already approved in the previous year. This is the only, uh, change, and I would recommend approval and, um, renewal, and, um, this information was also provided to Finance Committee.
Questions? So, just to remind me, Margot, what's the planned, uh, sort of long-term? When do we go out for re-bid completely? Is that every, how many years?
Every three years is the requirement. And, and just for the record, even with this increase, it is lower than what we were paying two years ago.
Okay, thank you. Good work.
And so, the contract in terms of where we-
We're at last year, there's, there's no changes. We're renewing it. The only changes are in the food pricing, as you said. And then, can you speak to any wellness grants that go with the contract with this service provider?
Heard of that, the bid, uh, in agreement with Chartwell's was a wellness grant for twenty-two thousand dollars, not annually. It was for the contract period.
Okay.
And, uh, so, we did, uh, receive that this year and worked through the Student Wellness Committee, uh, with the parent representatives. Uh, Randy Smousel and myself, uh, co-chair that, and their recommendation was to have half those dollar amounts be awarded to the individual site wellness committees. They need, they had, there was an application process. You know, they might have been doing a gardening, uh, type of, um, or, or wanting activity equipment, or there was a variety of requests, but we distributed that amongst the sites. Information was reviewed, again, by Student Wellness Committee to make sure it was in, in alignment with overall wellness. And then, the remainder, uh, is, uh, we have district-wide for district-wide wellness activities. For example, the student, uh, Student Wellness Fair would be a district-wide activity. So, Randy, would you have anything to add on those wellness grants?
No, just that, um, as Margot said, we had each of the schools submit a grant. Uh, we reviewed those at the Wellness Committee, um, and, uh, as you said, the, the things that were in line with what the Wellness Committee is trying to perpetuate across the district, um, all of those grant proposals have been approved to date, and, uh, we still have some remaining funds in there to support other activities.
And just, so, um, as you know, Margot, we had, do have a meeting set up on June first to do an annual review with Chartwell's to look at, perform, um, what we've done in the, this past year and then also set some goals, um, for next year, just in a discussion format. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, we continue to work with, with what we was a first year for them and some of the parameters that go with a first year and dealing with some of the commodities, et cetera, that, that they had to, uh, continue to use up. That had been ordered before they got here.
Excellent. Uh, any additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the food service contract effective July first, two thousand fifteen, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Around the meal pricing, can I get a motion to bring that one to the floor?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to increase, uh, the meal prices as listed. A little background, this reflects the percentage increase, I'm guessing.
It does.
Yep.
This is very much, uh, regulated by federal formula, and now it's, uh, quite a complicated worksheet, uh, to come up with the calculation, so we really don't have a choice. This is the minimum. We could certainly choose to go higher. Uh, that's not, uh, the recommendation. Uh, even with the increase, we are still, as you can see in your, um, Board Resolution, uh, certainly within range, uh, with the averages, uh, for our surrounding districts. And again, this went through Finance Committee as well and would recommend approval.
Any additional questions or discussion? It looks like both, most of the main meals go up ten cents.
Yeah.
All those in favor of approving meal pricing for fifteen sixteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Uh, next up, we have district-wide upgrade of front-end control system. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Margot, you can keep on going.
I have nothing to add here. It's within budget and it's funded by Alt Facilities. Would ask for your approval. Do you want to explain what a front-end system is? Oh, I knew you were going to say. Has to do with the, uh, our mechanical systems, but beyond that, I'd have to defer to Eric and call a friend.
Phone a friend, I love it.
So, the contract award amount is sixty-four thousand three hundred dollars. Has gone through our, our review process. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the front-end control system, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next up, multi-site fuel tank removal. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, to approve a contract with Azal Petroleum for multi-site fuel tank removal. Base contract is thirty-one thousand. Project is budgeted at one ninety-six.
How do you like that?
Well, it's, it's the unit cost.
Yeah, that's right. So, uh, part of that is, is intentional or conservative budgeting because when you're removing fuel tanks, um, you, you make your best estimates, but you don't know what you're going to find when you're, you get, get in there. And so, we were very pleased with the bid results, um, where they were at. This vendor was onsite, took a look at things. They are very familiar with this. Um, we're confident that they understand the work to be performed, and it is nice to have that margin between what the bid is and, uh, what the budget is in case, once we're actually within that project, that we do find, uh, that there's additional removal and, um, excavation and, uh, to, to remove, uh, any damaged soils. So, uh, would ask for your approval. And this is also funded by Alt Facilities.
A little background, why are we removing them and just where are they, out of curiosity?
We are, uh, at the elementary level, um, I believe they're Highlands and, I know Highlands has one.
That, that's okay. It's three elementaries and they're just no longer used. Is that the-
We are not using them at the elementary level as backup.
And he's, uh, initially were for backup power generation?
But we haven't been using them, and there are issues with, um, keeping the fuel oil in there for a long period of time.
Okay.
So, Margot, the, uh, the bids are kind of interesting because the next bidder is twice this level, the next bidder is five times this level, so while the company is familiar with us, are we familiar with this company?
Yes.
We have faith in them, that they're legitimate?
Yes, I asked this question. I have not worked, you know, worked with them before, but, um, they have a very, this according to the district architects, very good reputation, and we have a very long, successful working history with them. Uh, he, they were the only company representative that showed up on bid day, uh, and he, that person had put the bid together. He had taken time to review the sites prior to bidding, um, and was comfortable with this number. They believe the low number is representative of their expertise with this project type, and we are comfortable in awarding them the contract. I share the same concern and questions that you have, and that's why I, uh, followed up before the board meeting to make sure, because certainly there is a difference.
Additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the bid for the fuel tank removal at multiple sites, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Copy machines, can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Seconded to release of a Toshiba, standard contract, about thirty-seven twenty per month. A little background, is our annual?
Actually, we're trying to coordinate, uh, we, we had some annual, um, but have incorporated so that we have two large, uh, larger, you know, fifteen or so machines. This, uh, this year and then another round of a similar amount next year, and then we'll have a few years off. So, we get, we get, uh, have two cycles or years within a five-year period where we are replacing copy machines. We received, uh, proposals from four vendors, um, and recommend approval of Toshiba. We, um, all around, we have had good service with them. They have our current machines that are coming due next year. Uh, we are replacing a variety of Ricoh and Xerox copiers in, in this round. This will result in about a twenty-three thousand dollar savings over the five-year contract period. Um, also, as part of the quote, uh, it's part of this, um, Minnesota State contract, they also will include the rewrite software, um, which currently is coming out of the Technology Fund. And I know, Steve, you could speak to that just a little bit more of the positives and, um, how we're, we would be able to use that.
Certainly, thank you. Good evening, Board. So, the rewrite software and, um, the program called Paper Cut, we use quite a bit to measure how much printing we actually do, and the rewrite software allows us to scan a document in, into a copier or scanner and convert it into a readable PDF or an OCR, which will turn that into a Word document and email it. And so, it really starts allowing us, instead of to keep generating paper, is to convert a paper document into an electronic copy and then allow us to leverage that across the system.
Excellent.
This also went through, uh, as information to Finance Committee, and we recommend approval.
Any additional questions? All those in favor of approving the, uh, copy machine lease, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Uh, next up, we have our copy for, uh, paper contract. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved and seconded to approve a contract with Wilcox Paper, fifty-nine thousand. Normal process, annual bid?
Annual, yes. Uh, we may look at, uh, next year, uh, we do this annual and it's inventory and delivered once. We may, uh, research options for more of a, uh, just-in-time delivery or multiple deliveries throughout the year for next year, especially if we're under, um, have multiple sites under construction, um, we may have limited space for inventory. But, uh, for this year, we're continuing with, um, the process that we have used in the past and would recommend approval.
Excellent. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the paper contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Uh, next up, we have nine combined technology purchases. We're going to bring those up as a single motion, and we're going to let Steve walk through them for us. Uh, can I get a motion to bring those nine items to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve a variety of technology pur- purchases. Uh, Steve, if you could just walk us through sort of one by one real quick.
Yes, again, good evening, Board, and good evening, Superintendent. Um, as we continue to implement our technology plan, a major component of that technology plan is our e-learning squared, and though, uh, per, having a personal device isn't the only component of it, it is a major component. So, three of the action items this evening pertain to e-learning squared. The first one, which is for the Acer Chromebooks, is to equip each one of our fourth-grade classrooms with a cart of thirty Chromebooks, would allow that's, that grade level to be one-to-one. So, the first quote, we sent out a request for proposals to a number of vendors to receive eight hundred, a quote for eight hundred Chromebooks. Uh, they came back and the, uh, best one, based on our evaluation criteria, was Best Buy. It wasn't the cheapest, but it was only over by three thousand dollars, but it was a company we worked with before, and the next one wasn't a company I've ever seen before, and so, they did not receive the same evaluation under relationship. I'm going to skip ahead quickly to the third one, which is, goes hand in hands, and this is for the carts, and so, these will be the carts that the eight hundred Chromebooks will fit into and go into the fourth-grade classrooms. We received two quotes for that, one from Spectrum Industries and the other one from Zones, the cheapest one being Spectrum Industries, so we'll go with that. It's for twenty-three carts. And then, the next item is item six, which is the purchase of iPads. And so, at our elementary level, what we do is we work with the buildings to identify what their e-learning square technology is going to be. At elementary levels, we've seen a big increase in the iOS devices, and this is a quote for devices to equip, um, a number of our classrooms in the elementary level. It is based on state pricing. Uh, Apple does not, uh, offer any discounts, and there's just a single vendor for that. So, that's why you see no other vendor with that. Jumping to the second item, it is the renewal of our agreement for a co-branded web store with Best Buy. So, this will allow our incoming sixth-grade families to be able to leverage the Best Buy web store to purchase a device next fall. Again, that's voluntary. If they don't elect to do that, the district provides them a Chromebook. And so, it has the, uh, amended agreement on the backside with the, uh, dates and then the proposed products, which is Exhibit A.
Steve, can I ask a question about that one?
Mm-hmm.
So, when I look at, um, the pricing, so the suggested retail price is lower than the purchase price to be paid by parents. Can you explain on, for the Chromebook and, for the both Chromebooks?
Well, what, what P G on Lisa, just so we know. I'm sorry.
Exhibit two, well-
One sixty-seven in the official packet.
Okay, one sixty-seven, yep. I apologize, that, um, those prices aren't accurate. Those should be, uh, reduced. So, um, the prices are actually for the, uh, paid to by parent is a hundred and fifty dollars cheaper for each one of those items. I don't know how it ended up getting, um, mixed up. I apologize. Perhaps I need to bring this one back in, at the June Board meeting? No, we can have Sarah, we can do a friendly amendment. We'll just, we'll just have Sarah edit it, fix it. So, the, the purchase price for each of the line items is a hundred and fifty dollars less than what is listed on that spot. So, five ninety-nine minus a hundred and fifty, two seventy-nine minus a hundred and fifty, et cetera.
But why the difference? Because I saw that one too, the, like, the Chromebook, it says two eighty versus two seventy is the suggested retail. Is that because there's some software, other things that come on the ones that our students purchase? I wasn't quite sure why suggested was less than the-
Yeah, I, I apologize, this column is, it's not, the pricing is not accurate, so.
Should we bring that one back?
I, I can bring it back and, I'd rather do it correctly than incorrectly, so I can bring this back at, in the June Board meeting.
Thanks.
The other items are for our refresh, for our staff computers, and so, those are items five, seven, and eight. I'll go through those individually. So, we work with our cla- our buildings to identify the teacher computers, if it's going to be a desktop, a laptop, or a tablet computer, and then we count those up and send those out for requests for quotes. And, uh, we received a preferential quote from Reason Computer for the desktop computers, and the project lead-away computer has a graphics card in it, so it's a little bit more expensive, but you'll see that that's the price for the, uh, desktop computer. We also received the preferential price for the laptop computer, and Reason came in at the lowest price, again, at seven hundred and twenty-three. Uh, that computer's a very good computer. It has a eight gigs of RAM and a solid-state drive, and so, we've spent a number of months testing those computers with our staff, and it's been rated very well by those, um, those staff members, so we're really excited about that price. And then, finally, for, um, some teachers, particular science and math teachers that do a lot of work journaling, they use a tablet computer so they can actually draw on the screen and do math maniputives, and so, uh, we have a separate computer for them, uh, thirty-five of the Yoga tablets, and, uh, CDW came in a little bit cheaper for those devices. Finally, we have, um, two that are really for infrastructure, and those are, one is for, um, the purchase of what's called SmartNet. It is the software maintenance and hardware maintenance for our major infrastructure, our routers, our switches, and our telephone services. So, if any of those parts break, within twenty-four hours, we get new hardware and we get free upgrades of the software. And so, that's the CDW purchase for SmartNet services, and that's a state contract price. And, uh, the last one is for our Microsoft software, and that is to, um, for our staff to use that for virus protection, email for our staff, desktop management, computer and user authentication, so our usernames and passwords, and then, uh, just additional features. The other nice feature that they've rolled into this this year is they allow all staff members and students to access free Microsoft Office, and I know a number of the board members have taken advantage of that, and so, that is a free service that we're providing to staff members and students, which has a value on it. And again, that is a state- And again, that is a state contract price.
I have a couple just questions. So, it seems like we're all going to laptops, so what's, where are we using desktops?
That's a great question. So, I am a road warrior, so I prefer a laptop, but in another, number of our classrooms where we have smart boards, or we'll have document cameras, or we'll have scanners, or we'll have other peripheral devices plugged into them, a desktop computer is favorable over a laptop computer, just because there's not a lot of mobility in the classroom and just being able to have everything plugged in makes sense. That's primarily in our elementary schools. So, we do have four schools that are interactive whiteboard schools, where they, each classroom has interactive whiteboard. So, that technology is going there.
And then, my second one is, and I'm having a little computer issue, so we'll talk later. And I thought I read in there that our policy is to look every four years as to replacing. Is that still the right number? Do all of our, these devices need to be replaced in four years? I'm just, what's our thoughts on that?
We actually get our desktop computers with a five-year warranty on them, so it's a five-year warranty with a two-hour response time. It's a fabulous deal. It's, a local vendor actually manufactures these computers, and so, they're repaired within two hours. Our laptops do, are on a four-year refresh. They're under warranty for three years, and then, on that fourth year, we kind of let them go. If they do break, we generally will replace the device, but we won't try to fix that laptop. And so, four years on our laptops and tablets, five years on our desktops, and then, our iOS devices, our iPads and our Chromebooks, those are around a three-year refresh on those. They're so new that we really haven't seen the life cycle of those yet, but we anticipate iPads will start getting, coming up on their third or fourth year, and our Chromebooks, though they're, we're seeing really great use of those and they're still working well, we think that about three years will be stretching the life of those devices.
So, we're just doing a blanket refresh, or are we going as needed?
Well, I think what the refresh is, the plan is, five years for desktops, four years for laptops, three years for student devices like iPads and Chromebooks.
Steve, you, maybe I didn't understand, but on the Apple products, did you say there was no discount available?
There's a slight discount, but the only vendor to purchase them from, so there's no ability to negotiate with multiple vendors to get a favorable price. The only vendor is Apple to purchase them from, and if you buy them in 10-packs, you do receive a slight discount. I think it's $25 off per device.
Because if I walk in with my school ID, I get an educator's discount. So, are you at least getting the same educator discount I'm getting?
Yes.
Okay. That's good to know. The other thing is, and you may not be the person to report back, but as we roll out Chromebooks into fourth grade and as we roll out iPads, I think at like 220 iPad minis, I'd like to get like a report back that tells us what the substantive use of these devices is, are, in these classrooms? So, I don't know if that's to you, or if maybe it's to Randy?
Well, I think it falls under both Randy's and our area. We are in particular, I find e-learning squared, a lot of times, we fixate on the device, but I couldn't agree with you more. The important piece of it is, is that we're identifying the digital content, but we're also working with our teachers to give them the professional development that they need in order to use that technology. We work closely with the curriculum TOSSAs, and they're using them quite a bit. They're used in a number of different ways, not just in instruction, but also as part of that formative assessment, and so, they're used in Mastery Connect, they're using in Kahoot and some of the other ones. But we'll collect some of those best practices and bring it back at a future Board meeting, if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be handy in terms of whether we expand the rollout or continue it to know particularly in the elementary level, what usage there is of the devices. And, you know, I don't want to focus only on elementary. We should know throughout the system.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor, which is to, which is to approve all nine technology purchases. I'd like to get an amendment to table the agreement on the web store.
So, would you like to state?
Yeah, no, no, just move.
I move that we table the amendment on the web store.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor of tabling the web store to make some fixes to the pricing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has been removed. Now, remaining on the table, we have Item J with Items One and Three through Nine. Any additional discussion? All those in favor of approving technology purchases One and Three through Nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, a motion to bring this policy review up, which is now down to Policy 616 and 621?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve 616 and 621, two policies that we've seen previously. Any discussion? I know Regina has some minor tweaks to 616.
Just a couple of very small notes for a friendly amendment on 616 and 621. There was some discussion at the April meeting regarding language, which is amended, particularly in the purpose of 616, the language is set forth. In 3G, the language is updated to comply with the new MSBA language. The MSBA format is to use the word shall, and our district format is to use the word will, so just a friendly amendment that will update that language. In 621, the request for some small change in language in Section Two has been made. However, there was also a request that the appendix title be amended to read Tutor Application Request, as opposed to just Tutor Application. So, again, I would just offer that this be a friendly amendment. We will put request in and move these forward for approval this evening.
Thank you, Regina. Thanks to the committee for all their work in policy. Any additional comments, questions, or information?
So, I just had a question, and I just happened to pull it up. When I look at the committee on 616, when I look at the list of who should be on the committee, and then, I went to our committee, so it says a school board member is on that committee, but there isn't one on that committee, or at least it's not listed on that committee. So, are we having? So.
Can you tell us what's on your.
So, I don't know.
What is it, is it 616, 3A?
Yes.
One, number one?
Yeah.
On page 185 of the packet?
Thank you.
Is that, is that the?
Yeah, so it says the committee where we reflect the diversity of the community, and the membership will include A through H, or I, because there's two H's there.
Yeah, it's referenced, okay, thank you, yes.
And so, D is a school board member, and so, I pulled up the World's Best Workforce Committee, there isn't a school board member listed, and so, are we keeping a school board member and adding one, or are we taking that? I'm just trying to, and maybe that's not a policy thing, or I'm just trying to understand.
I think it's an oversight, and also, I is.
Yeah, it should be I instead of H. We have two H's there.
H to I.
Where did you get that?
On our website.
Lisa, are you volunteering to be on the committee?
Maybe, but I just want, I'm just trying to make sure it matches.
You have policy.
On the workforce.
We'll double-check. We'll need to check on that and get that assigned.
Okay.
Because we had it under the accountability piece, I don't know what happened, so.
Well, is that, is it the intent, I guess?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Should have a Board rep.
Yep. And I just don't think it's on our radar, so maybe we need to discuss that later.
This wasn't in our packet.
No, no, I pulled that up.
That's why I was confused.
To see it if aligned.
And Regina, you caught the friendly amendment on I?
Yes, I did, thank you. I have it up.
Okay, good, good, good catch there. Any additional items, comments about Policy 616 or 621? Sign in, all those in favor of approving those as presented with the minor tweaks noted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Policy 616 and 621 have passed. Next up, discussion, we have strategic plan to start with. Or you want to sort of talk about these as a group, Rick?
Well, I will. I so, presented this information earlier, the Board's also, we've had two discussions at work sessions around the 2016, 2017, two-year planning process. The guiding change documents, which is B, that was, again, reviewed by the Teaching and Learning Committee. It has not been reviewed formally by the Board, and we know we want to take it back to the Teaching and Learning Committee to get more input, but again, just to have the Board get their eyes in front of that, this would help shape some of our decision-making as relates to some of the program design with our middle school going to a 6-8 middle school and a 9-12 high school, as well as our facilities and time. So, you can see, and those documents all align to our other studies that we've already completed and the Board has supported. C takes a look at our writing materials, K through Five. Randy and his team presented earlier on that, and we'd be bringing that back in June for Board Action. We have our concurrent enrollment in mathematics. Randy, maybe you could touch base on that.
So, one of the areas of our strategic plan calls for expanding partnerships with higher education, and an area for partnership to, our potential partnership to pilot this time, this type of opportunity includes concurrent enrollment options at the college level, which could replace our college algebra prep course at the high school. Concurrent enrollment means that a student would be dual-enrolled at both the high school and at a college that is associated with a particular course. The proposal that we are pursuing is to pilot a concurrent enrollment that, course that would replace college algebra prep at the high school for our seniors that currently take college algebra prep. Part of the rationale is that we are looking at courses that provide both a rigorous experience but also provide a college-level experience and potentially credit for students at the college level. You might say, well, we have AP courses, which is true, but this would be targeted for students that would not be in, necessarily in an AP course. And currently, the only pathway we have for college credit in math at the high school is to take AP Calculus. To partner, our math teachers must be approved, and some potential vendors that we're exploring would be Bemidji State University, Normandale Community College, and Oka Ramsey. There is some costs to a partnership like this, which include professional training for the staff, potentially textbooks. It's about $1,800 per section, and there are some examples of sample courses, I think the example is from Bemidji State University, that parallels our college algebra prep course and would provide students for this type of experience. There's also some research that articulates that students who get an opportunity to participate in a college-like experience, earning credit while still in high school, are both more likely to go to college and more successful when they do go, and they include a citation in there. So, we're just asking for permission to continue moving forward and pursuing concurrent enrollment-type partnership in the future.
And just to clarify, these classes are taught by our teachers?
These classes would be taught by our teachers, but those teachers go through an approval process with the university that typically requires them to have graduate coursework in that content area. Not necessarily a master's in that area, but a certain number of credits of graduate coursework in that content area.
Thanks for clarifying. So, Randy, before you go further, I'm not quite sure what it is that is before the Board, because if it comes back as an action item, all we're doing is approving you to continue to investigate this?
Yeah, so, so.
We're not approving it.
You're not approving, so this is just discussion about the potential to pursue a concurrent enrollment partnership, and what we're saying right now is we're looking at multiple vendors for potentially that partnership at this time. We would come back to the Board and ask for permission to pursue a particular vendor and to pursue a particular partnership to replace this course at the high school level.
So, to the extent that, I mean, one of our objectives is to create a college experience or college rigor for all of our students. So, if this particular proposal is designed to drive towards that end, what I'd like to know is, if we, first of all, will this provide a college experience for students that don't otherwise have a college experience within our current curriculum? Second, what would be the long-term cost if we rolled this out throughout the entire district? Because it doesn't make sense from my end to do a model that gets 100 students somewhere and leaves 500 behind. So, I'd want to know what we're going to do district-wide, what it would cost, and if we have the cost, then what do we leave out? Right.
Yeah, I think those are great questions. First of all, these are typically students that do not take AP courses, and so, they're not students that benefit from that opportunity, but they're students that still want to go to college, and we believe that a college-type experience and a college credit opportunity will benefit them greatly. Trying to determine where these partnerships occur is a challenging element, because part of it is trying to find a university that has courses that align with some of our programming that allow us to create those kinds of partnerships. So, this one, for example, is simply in math, and we could certainly map out in all these different areas where we could potentially have concurrent enrollment partnerships. Currently, though, we only have one explored for mathematics. So, it might be something that we could answer long-term. I think it'll be difficult for us to answer it in the short term. It is, the major cost is $1,800 per section, so it would just depend upon how broad we wanted to create opportunities like this. There are other types of AP opportunities in other areas for students, in other content areas. We feel that this is an area in mathematics that is more limited for students, based on the options we have currently.
So.
Go ahead. Yeah, my understanding was that the cost of this would work out to about $30,000, because you've got the 1,800 per section, plus then you have books that you have to buy. And so, I just think that we need to know where we're going before we start down the path. And so, I still would have the question of, where do you envision us ending up if this proposal gets adopted and we do this? What's the next step? And can we, as a district, afford this particular model as opposed to a different model?
I guess I would, I would second that. Like, what is the overarching goal? I think we've talked about this before. If this particular class is taught by our teachers in our high school, I don't know how somebody gets that college experience. I'm just, if it's very similar to the class, I just don't know how that's a college experience, and it is a cost. And so, how do, you know, how do, I'm just having a hard time seeing that right now.
They're, so they're still high school students, but they're getting the college-level curriculum, and they're taking the same assessments that they would at the college level. So, in terms of the rigor of the content, that's aligned to the college. In terms of where we're going with this, we are exploring this opportunity in mathematics, and then, we'll continue to explore other departments, other areas, but currently, this is, this is all we have to bring to the Board at this time. And so, that's why we, that's why this has discussion, because that's where we're at.
Well, what I would share from our teaching and learning discussion when this came up is, as I understand this, there's a group of students who currently don't have a right match within our math curriculum to meet their needs for rigor. So, they, AP classes, I understand it would be a mismatch, but the current classes that they're taking don't meet the level of challenge. So, this opportunity provides a math class that is more right match for this group of students. Now, this is, I mean, as Randy said, this is just one, this is one solution for a group of students, AP meets another group of students who are well-established in that area. Between the two, it still may not cover all of the needs in the math curriculum, but it might offer a direction that is better matched for a large number of our students.
But my question is, for free, though, we could just level the class, so why aren't we taking the class that's not meeting the needs and leveling?
The cost, and I guess as I, as we talked about it in teaching and learning, there is a cost issue that still needs to be clarified and explored, but there's also a curriculum issue that we aren't meeting, and this, we need to reconcile both.
Students have to take the Accuplacer to qualify for the opportunity to get in here, and there are, of the students who would be in college algebra prep, I think as of today, in talking with Jenny Johnson, we have at least two sections of those students who could potentially take this course. And so, that's our best estimate at this time of, of the number. that's our best estimate at this time of, of the number of sections that we would be looking to pilot next year if Bemidji State is the vendor that we bring forward to the board. The, the part of the strategic plan that, that we are trying to address is expanding partnerships with higher ed. And so we're exploring, what does that mean, trying to define that? And here's an opportunity to explore partnership with higher ed in the area of mathematics to motivate and engage our students to participate in a higher-level course for seniors in math that also gets them a credit, or gets them credit for college and a college-level content experience. And although they are not at the universities, that would be PSEO, in which case we lose funding to do that, we, we can provide them the same content or rigor in terms of experience. They become a university student, they have a university ID, they have access to all of the library and resources that a regular college student at that university would have. So there are a number of other types of resources that become available for that student who participates in a program like this.
Additional questions?
So another issue we talked about at teaching and learning was the equity piece, because this was a class in which the district would be paying the fees versus for AP, the students have to pay the fees to get the college credit. And so we still need to try to reconcile district-wide how we provide sort of college rigor opportunity for everybody, which is separate from college credit for everybody.
Right, because this, this class you're getting college credit for, but whereas AP, they have to pay to take a test, correct? In this one, there would be no cost to end up with a college credit?
Correct, and I think that's a, a very fair discussion to have, because there, there is an issue of equity in those two different types of situations. And I'm not sure how other districts have resolved that. Many districts offer concurrent enrollment opportunities for kids. We go to Bloomington and they have it. We can go to Mounds View, and they have extensive concurrent enrollment opportunities. And I, I guess they have invested in kids differently that might not typically take the AP courses or take advantage of that kind of opportunity, or qualify for, or be successful for that type of opportunity. But trying to hook them and prepare them for the transition for that next leap that they're going to make, they've looked to concurrent enrollment to provide some of those kinds of opportunities. Anoka Henepin, a large district, has many different opportunities, and I think I've included some materials to the board on some, just different programs available around the state. And that's a, that's a limited set that we found in the, in the time we've been processing this. I think there's certainly more. But we'll continue to add to that, just for more background information.
Thanks, Randy. Additional questions?
Just a comment. There were lots of good questions and comments, I think, tonight, Randy, but I also want to say, I, I think there's a lot here to be enthusiastic about. It offers a great opportunity to kids who, whose needs maybe are not getting met as easily as the gifted kids or the advanced kids. And maybe to excite teachers. And I assume if we develop new classes to meet those needs internally, we'd still have costs for books and some of these other things. So maybe something to think about is to really give a sense to the board of, of how much incremental cost this involves. Because my sense is it's not as big as it sounds at first blush. So I really appreciate you looking into this, and, and think it's a very exciting possibility, just some wrinkles to, to continue to explore.
Thank you.
Should we continue to walk through, and then if people have questions, we'll go back. Go ahead with the MOU.
Teacher evaluation. We have an amendment. Randy and Libby's also here today, tonight. Just a minor change there, the impact.
So fall of two thousand thirteen, EME membership and the school board approved the Edina teacher evaluation programs memorandum of understanding to be implemented in two thousand fourteen through two thousand sixteen school year. We have a teacher evaluation committee, which consists of five administrators and five teachers. And that teacher evaluation committee monitors the implementation of the program, and they've recommended some of the attached changes to four separate sections of the MOU. The EME governance board has reviewed and approved these changes from their perspective. So the four changes include creating a little bit more focus around our expectations for probationary teachers. When probationary teachers come in, they have to meet all nineteen descriptors. And they're still responsible for those descriptors, but what we're proposing is to create some focus around specific descriptors in each year of those probationary years. The rationale is that it's a little bit more manageable for our administrators who are doing the observations rather than focusing on nineteen. They can really focus in and hone on nine of them or eight of them. They can go deeper on those particular descriptors, because that's the focus area of that particular year. And they are probably more appropriate developmentally for our probationary teachers based on their year one or year two or year three status. The second change would be just a, a small language cleanup on the classroom teacher rubric for descriptor seven, just removing the parenthetical, which has just been a point of confusion to our teachers. Some contradictory, not, a slightly contradictory language in there, so just, just removing that from the descriptor, again, doesn't change any of the performance levels. The next one, section thirteen F, is about professional learning communities. The expectation that teachers are on a, at least a team, but the expectation is that they're on one team. If they're on more, that, that would be a teacher choice, but they at least need to be on a team. And that team meets weekly for thirty to sixty minutes. Thirty to sixty minutes probably fits better within our current schedules and the way teachers' time is scheduled across the system. So particularly as an example at the high school level, that fits in better with how we have organized collaborative time. The section fourteen around mentorship. In our agreed-upon last MOU, we agreed that we would formalize a mentorship program, and the teacher evaluation committee has done a lot of work this year on looking at mentorship programs. And we know we have mentorship that is already in place, that already occurs in the school. And, and this is really a way of just formalizing that to some degree. And so there's a proposal here to, to do that. And that's for teachers that are in their first and second year to have a building-level mentor. Their compensation options could include a, a, a small but recognizable stipend for those individuals. It could include a compensation day or potentially a reduction in duties, which would be negotiated with the principal. Bust duty seems to be a favorite that our teachers propose to put in lieu of being a mentor. And then maybe other things as determined by the principal. And then that stipend would come out of our, since it's about professional learning, it'd come out of our professional learning budget. We are bringing this for a discussion, and then we'll bring it at our next June, June meeting, yes, to see if we can approve it for action, and then we would need to sign off on the MOU changes. Sorry, that was a long window.
Nope, and we can talk about that. And then finally, we have the high school calendar changes, which we mentioned earlier. And that would conclude all the discussion items that I asked the board to entertain any questions we'd have about any of those items, A through F. I think we've talked a little bit about the concurrent enrollment, but those other items you might want questions on.
Say, Randy, just to play devil's advocate, so when we go, when we pare down the parameters, the nineteen parameters, and break them into one, two, three, you know, breaking, having smaller segments per year. Just what, what, what is the benefit to focusing in on certain parameters each year versus having to hit that mark of all nineteen every year for the first three years? Because then, the way I understand it, then our teachers become tenured. So this is our way of making sure that they're, you know, meeting the standards upfront, correct?
Correct. I would invite Libby to come participate in this answer, since she has been patiently, and just publicly to thank Libby for all of her work that she has done to help us implement the teacher evaluation program. She has done tremendous work with our coaches, with the leading and facilitating the teacher evaluation committee, and has been waiting here this evening anxious to help support any questions that the board has for this program. So, Libby?
For the question. So across all three years of the probationary cycle, teachers will hit all nineteen of the descriptors. Some of the descriptors are intentionally placed in each of the years, and that came at the request of administrators. So for example, descriptor number six communicates high yet attainable expectations for all students is found in each of the three years. What we heard from administrators is that they find it very difficult to spend quality time with teachers on any, focused on any of these descriptors as they're trying to cover all nineteen. So they were the ones that came actually to the teacher evaluation committee and said, could we look at this differently? And I think through the discussions that both the teacher evaluation committee had and our teacher evaluation training sessions, when we brought these ideas to them, they, the principals and the coaches alike were in favor of this idea because of that intentionality. Administrators did bring up the scenario of what if another descriptor pops up that we need to address, but it's not one of the list for that particular year? How do we do that? So what will probably happen in the software that we have that allows us to track teachers' progress through the program is we'd have a rubric with all nineteen descriptors open. And really, the, the list that's here is the list of focused descriptors for the year. The rest of the descriptors are kind of fair game, and we do need to be addressing those and talking about them with our newest staff members throughout the time. And the other pieces too, so I'm a year one teacher. My principal says, I'd like to bring you back next year, but I want you to continue to focus on these three descriptors. There will be a way for them to do that in the second year. And in addition, for those teachers who are one of one, meaning they have one year in Edina before they are granted continuing contract and are non-probationary, they will still have to cover all nineteen descriptors, because administrators have one year to make a decision as to whether or not they'd like to grant them continuing contract. So everyone was in favor of those teachers needing to cover all nineteen descriptors. So it's a long answer.
Can I just make, I think, I think you said this, but I just want to make sure. So let's say, for example, we have a year one teacher who, let's say, does not, did not, does all of these except provide students clear and timely feedback, and that was an area of concern. But that's not on year two, so that just gets brought forward? Or, I mean, and, I'm just trying to figure out how that gets
So I'm
I'm trying to look for personalized learning for teachers, is what I'm getting at.
And principals did express that concern too. If we've got something that doesn't show up in year one, but we identify that as an area for growth, or we have a descriptor that needs to be carried over to the second or third year, how can we do that? So we, administrators will be able to do that. I'm working a little bit with Talent Ed to figure out what the best way to do that might be. Right now, I think it's having a rubric that will be open all year long for those teachers with all nineteen. So there is a place for the administrator to document whatever concern they might be having, so that we do have that recorded in the system.
Is this the system that we talked about when I When I got to participate in the review of the system, where the computer is, there was some expression that some of the software may not be ideal.
There's some clunkiness to that. I will say that last year, well, as Molly Schrader said at the beginning of the year, we're living in beta, and Talent Ed is a prime example of that. Kind of gave it my best shot last summer, as we took six weeks to get it all up and running. And right now, I'm in the process of making modifications so that it's, it's more efficient and effective for teachers, so.
But this is part of a new process overall, correct, with teacher evaluation? So we're living in beta.
We're learning.
Excellent, thank you.
But I would have to say it's much more efficient than our previous software system that we had in place.
It is able to, it has, it's more robust and allows us to track and collect more data than we had been able to do in the past. I'm looking forward, actually, at the end of next week to running some reports that will show kind of the breakdown of all of our teaching staff across all the performance levels. And when I'm here in June for my yearly alt-comp update, I will have some of that data for you.
Excellent, thanks.
Was there any discussion about giving the administrators some support for the probationary teachers? Does your staff help them out at all, or to what extent?
The peer coach position, they work solely with non-probationary teachers. And part of that, you know, they have approximately sixty-eight teachers per coach. So there is not, they don't have a lot of extra time within their schedule, and it's not part of their job description as is currently written.
One of the other additional supports that we do provide is we have the, our curriculum TOTAs that do offer to go out and do an observation or two with our probationary teachers. So at least they have an opportunity to go through and do a practice observation before doing that observation with their principal. So it's an additional way for them to get some feedback, to get questions answered about how all of this works, and might, might reduce some time that is required between the principal and the probationary teacher for, for some of those basic questions.
Thanks. Additional questions? Other items, go ahead, Lenny.
No, I was, not on Libby's area.
Okay, thanks, Libby. Go ahead, Lenny.
I feel compelled to ask something about the calendar. You've been sitting here the whole time. But my question isn't really going to be all that taxing. So the number of hours that we ended up with on the high school schedule, so how does that differ from the prior year? So I see our balance, for example, for seniors is, exceeds the state standard by thirteen hours. Were we that close last year?
Yes. This is a very similar schedule to last year, and with the potential exception of we did not do a late start first day of school for sophomores this year, this current year.
Can you just explain that more? I saw that one, and I just, I was having trouble wrapping my head around that when it's their first day at the high school.
Absolutely. So we have found, and we're always juggling with this one, we want to smooth the transition for incoming tenth graders as much as possible. It's a scary day. It's an intense day for them. They're learning to navigate the building, they're meeting their teachers for the first time, they're walking their schedule, they're learning how to go through the lunch line, and getting their planners. Everything's happening at once. We've found that it is helpful to give them a couple hours. And so we have explored a variety of different activities, such as some of our student leadership groups have led activities and kind of a get-to-know-you type of thing. Dr. Lackler likes to address the incoming sophomores. What we would like to try is to have them actually walk their schedule with fifteen-minute periods this coming year. So they're going to walk their schedule quickly in advance. They'll go to each of their teachers, they'll get to know their teacher. Each teacher will have one component of starting out the year successful that they will present to that group. So one teacher might, the teacher that hands out the planners, for instance, might talk about how to use your planners, the importance of staying organized, the importance of, not a bad idea to have a locker. Just to get your feet on the ground with that. Another teacher may talk about locations of key points in the buildings. Another teacher may talk about who to go to for help if you, if you need this or need that. In addition to introducing themselves, you know, welcome to Algebra II, but these are some components. And then by the end of that, six periods shortened to our simile of, of day, they, they, the juniors and seniors will be arriving, and they will actually run their full day with their actual classes.
So can, this has been, what's worked in the sixth grade is having a, we, everybody get connected day, get connected, no, where everybody belongs.
Web day.
Yep.
And that's been, from what I understand, very successful. The sixth graders really feel comfortable, they get connected with someone in an upper level that they know they can go to, when they have questions on a separate day. Then the first day is fun, is for everybody. Was that considered?
Explain it a little bit more, the format of that.
Web day is a day that's completely separate. It's, it's usually about a week before school starts. It's like a nine to noon kind of thing. So she was asking more, yeah.
We do a get connected day, absolutely.
Well, it's not get connected, it's separate. There's also a get connected day. So web is only for sixth graders. It's usually, you have to be eighth or ninth, eighth grade.
Eighth or ninth graders.
Eighth grade, and you're in a peer, peer insight.
It's peer leadership group.
It's a peer leadership. So they come in as well, and they have a small group of, a team of ten or twelve. So they come in as well, and they have a small group of, a team of 10 or 12 people, and they lead them through the school. They ask, they answer questions about what it's like to be here, how do you go along, they do all of that to help acclimate them before the first day of school.
One of our challenges, one of our challenges is that these students are all involved, and many of them are involved in extracurricular, right at the start of the school year, so it's a different.
High school does do, and I don't want to steal what you know, because you have a broader oversight than I do, but what I have experienced with the high school through their get connected day, and particularly 212 leadership, has been really great at just being present to work with students one-on-one. It doesn't mean that the system won't continue to be tweaked, because it's adjusted every year as needs are identified. That might be a little bit different. But as Rick said, by the time students are coming into ninth grade or 10th grade, their profile of extracurricular activities is quite different, particularly in that week or two right before the first day of school. So the needs are just a little bit different, therefore, the, the welcome format is adjusted to meet that.
And some of those elements have been included in the get connected day. We do have our 212 cabinet there with representatives, leading students who come with their parents, and we recommend they come with their parents, because they're going to need to get their student ID and their picture. They go on tours. And then, there is an orientation session in FIC auditorium that we ask them to attend.
Any additional items in the calendar?
Some of us haven't hit that yet. We'll be there.
Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items people have questions about under discussion?
I was, the guiding change documents, there's, we have three tonight.
That could take a whole.
And I, I just was wondering, are we going to discuss these further at another work session, or are we approving these next board meeting?
The teaching and learning committee reviewed them briefly as well. We just want to get it out in front, it's kind of the way I presented tonight with the construction plan at the work session. We just want to get this information to the board, make it public. We have some refinement work to do around it, but in general, it's kind of the direction we're headed, and we want to, we can work on the refinements. So if board members have specific input or questions, we'll certainly accept those through the teaching and learning committee before we bring it back for action.
So I thought we had talked about actually having a work session on the guiding change documents before it came back for action.
Yep. So the whole construction and all.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
So this is, we're going to have a full dedicated discussion.
Around.
These guiding change.
Well, the guiding change will be part of that whole construction, programming, and finance side, that whole extended meeting.
Okay. Then, just in brief, could, I know we had two for 912, because one is more facilities-based versus the other one is going to be program-based, and so we're not ready to have the, obviously the facilities one, because the 6'8" is a little bit, we need to, we have more time for that.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, the first document, the district strategic plan, is that, are we going to work on that in a work session as well?
So that would be planned to go for action in June, if we're ready to do that, but we certainly can take some dialogue. We've, you know, reviewed this twice in work sessions previous, but would be open to whatever changes, and that can go again through the teaching and learning committee.
Any additional items? Questions? Comments or discussions?
I think one of the things around BG5 that I've been feeling like I'd like to see some, when we talk about under, you know, all principals coordinators, we'll coordinate through teaming to coordinate all work. I think one of the things that I, I love about Edina, and that I also get frustrated with our elementary buildings, and it's probably true of any district, is just sometimes some of the inconsistencies that, that I worry creates, some inequities, where we do things at this building this way, and we do it this way, that way at that building, and, and whether it's communications or program implementation, I'm hoping that with the BG5 study, we can find the places where, what is the best term, the tights?
Tight and loose, yep.
And, and the things that are allowed to be loose, but I really, I see some inconsistencies that I'm hoping that through this study will be able to start to get at a little bit better.
Yep. And that's something we'll study deeper as we move into that study, the birth through grade five, especially the elementary programming in 2015, 16, but good point.
So, when this comes to action, this, what will that mean? And when will that happen? So all of, everything in this document?
That'll be a directional document. It'll be a, it's, again, it's, it's not the path, but it's a roadmap that will guide our work, but it does frame out the points of where we would enter into potential decision-making as it relates to everything from, you know, the school calendars to, again, it just gives us a framework to work off of, it, you know, doing refinement work on an approved strategic plan. It aligns to the secondary study that we've already accepted. It aligns closely with what we see rolling out of the BG5 study, and there's very little in the community ed study, because we haven't seen from, or heard from that yet. But we kind of know the direction, and the board did hear reports in January and again in March on the birth through grade five study.
And, and the pilots, pilot report on that is coming quite soon, I understand, for, I mean, for BG5?
Right, correct. From the birth through grade five, those pilots are being reviewed tomorrow, and we'll bring some recommendations back to the board in June.
Any additional questions or comments regarding our discussion items? Seeing none around the information, number of information pieces there. Appendix or policies, anything anybody wants, questions about? Any announcements? Any reports, leadership updates? Nothing?
Nine days? No, eight days.
Okay, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Any objection to adjourning at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.